All right, we will officially call the city of Niswa. Budget workshop to order. It is five oh one. Maggie, I guess I'll turn it to you.
Okay, I am gonna, let me. You all received some budget information yesterday or yesterday. And I kind of made a short list of, I'll say, new items. I think everybody was pretty. Reserved within their budgets as they prepared for two thousand twenty six. Knowing the council wants to stay at a lower levy increase. And so up on the screen, let me see if I can zoom in a little bit. There's not many new things to consider as we kind of work through the twenty six budget. The new. Paid family leave. Is kind of an impact to. The entire city, everybody who gets paid a wage. There is a portion that needs to go back to the state to pay for this. Paid family leave law. The premium is point eight eight percent as a whole, which for just the general fund. Employees is about thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars. We talked about this a little bit at our last. Maybe April budget meeting. In regards to this, we did not get a lot of feedback from the council on whether they'd like to see the city pay for the entire premium. Or. They are required to do at least half. So I put it all in there just to show the biggest impact. Where we would be sitting with the general fund this. This thirteen thousand does not include like pickle and spirits and wastewater because those are their own funds. So I don't know if anybody has any comments on that. Otherwise, I can go through the rest of these items.
So I just have a question to clarify. The city or the employer is required to pay half.
Correct.
If we do not pay the full amount, then is that just deducted out of the employee's checks? Is that how that works?
Correct.
Okay. And.
So if you look at that thirteen thousand seven hundred, the premium, the full premium based on our wages is thirteen thousand seven hundred. If the city only wants to pay the required fifty percent, which is point four four, it's half of that.
Okay, and and do we know yet from the state? I'm not, I'm just getting up the speed on this rule myself, but. Do we know how premiums are going to be set moving forward with this or how that point eight eight is going to be calculated from the state?
They have been, the little bit I understand, they've been gathering data for like the last year based on wages that we have submitted to the state. And so that is the set rate for twenty six. With the state program. There are other. Groups out there that do. Offer this. I'm not, I think some of the rates are coming in a little bit lower, but I have not had time to research other options at this point.
Sure.
So I will say this is the worst case.
Okay.
Any other? Okay. One of the unknowns here is we have three union contracts that are expiring at the end of this year and part of. The regular meeting, we will be talking about how we're going to initiate those contracts moving forward and try and get the ball rolling with. Negotiations on that. So that is kind of the unknown dollar amount on what. The unions will propose and what will be agreed upon. One of the new items I will say for my department is clerk minutes. I was able to do a little bit of research. And it looks like they have a program that would. You can insert the agenda and the recording and it pops out minutes.
Is it called AI?
It is, well, it's called clerk minutes, but yes, very similar. And it's twelve hundred dollars a year. I will say for the smallest package. It gives me five monthly meetings. And three boards or departments, so kind of like council planning and zoning, public works or parks. Because we only can have three, so I have to some, I have to streamline what maybe. What department maybe doesn't take as long a minutes to do. But we can have up to five minutes or five monthly meetings. So I think that is kind of on average and it's twelve hundred dollars a year.
I, if I may, I think based on the administrative burden that. You all are under right now. Would that be beneficial to have now?
Yes, I have, I'm working on a like a thirty day trial. So I will start that this, I'm hoping this week I had to get through this major piece of budget and then. I've been stacking up some minutes from the past month that I'm hoping that I can just kind of do. Test them just to see how it functions. Based on my conversation with a few other cities that actually use it currently. They said it takes like five minutes. So it might require a little bit more time because of motions that need to be maybe typed in or whatnot, but. They said that you can do like short minutes, medium minutes or long minutes. So I don't know what that it classifies. So maybe depending on how detailed you want to be on that. But everybody says it's been a lifesaver.
Personally, personally, I'm in favor of this on the budget for next year, but. I think it'd be worthwhile, Maggie, to see what, even pulling it out of the. Out of the reserve funds to be able to have the service for this year. And with. That price tag, it should be, should be able to do it within your authorization limit. Pending. Item number three or four for the regular meeting goes through, so. That's my thoughts on it.
Is it, is the cost for the, like the annual subscription?
Yes, they, I think, based on the little bit I see, they have monthly plans. I think they bill on a monthly. Charge of one twenty nine. So I don't know if there's a discount to do it annually or not. But at least I could say we're going to pay for the next. This year on a monthly basis, so it's not maybe such a huge burden to this year and then budget for the twelve hundred next year. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say move ahead with it.
Okay.
We shouldn't actually have to because it should be within our spending one to do it.
Yeah, okay. Then the next thing that is kind of an unknown that we've been working through with the organizational assessment report. And kind of being short a little bit within our admin finance clerk clerk department is. How you want to structure that if there's new employees or how we're restructuring that there might be an unknown cost to that. Just not sure how you guys want to move forward with that piece. So I do not know those dollar amounts as of now. I do have. Money in the budget for the admin. Administrator and the clerk positions kind of at that middle range for two thousand twenty six. So there's money in there for it. It's just a matter of. How much? So I picked the middle of the scale as a good starting point.
Middle of the scale as unknown?
The middle of the scales.
Unknown, one million dollars.
No, but based on their grades that their positions sit right now.
Yeah, and I think we'll know more after Thursday probably.
Okay, then I will maybe let Steven, if you guys have questions, talk about. He's got a couple of training opportunities for some certificates that are in here. One is for the building code. Certification that eventually the city will need once we hit, I think, twenty five hundred people. And then the AICP training.
Yeah, that is correct. So checking with the state of Minnesota, the threshold at which our municipality will have to adopt the building code is twenty five hundred. Twenty twenty five census data places us at about twenty three hundred people. Which is significantly higher than the last. Decade census of nineteen hundred, I think in twenty twenty. So depending on where development goes in the city, we may find ourselves there sooner or later. Especially as we add residential developments into the community. We could find ourselves there at the twenty thirty. This was a, both of these elements were in the desirable classification for my job description, so. Did some research into the cost of acquiring the certifications for Building Official Limited and for AICP certification. To this result here. Different communities do things differently. So you might have the notion of outsourcing. The actual building code inspection. Program for permit review. So that you have somebody that is licensed as a contractor to come in and outsource that rather than having someone on staff doing that. As you know, currently I have a department of one, so I'm responsible for all the day to day stuff, general permit review. Structuring, planning, commission, board of adjustment meetings. And so that's going to be a consideration as you move forward. I envision that regardless of contracting, you're going to need somebody that is knowledgeable about building code. That's trained on that type of stuff so that you can administer that consultant or contractor at the staff level. And so. Seeing it there, preparing to fill that role when the city needs it, so. What I have for those.
I don't have a question for you.
And Steve, oh, sorry, you guys go.
I don't think there's any.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, there is an opportunity for some, like, in the meantime, like, let's say next year we hit. Twenty five hundred people, like, there is an opportunity to have a consultant or something do that in the interim until we were to get up to speed.
Absolutely. Yeah, at the time that the state says you need to adopt something, I would look at that very similar to the deadline that the state gave us for cannabis licensure and regulations. They may have a sunset date at which we need to adopt an ordinance that regulates that. I don't think that they're going to drop the hammer on us immediately, so to speak. But we should be planning forward for that eventuality as our community develops, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, then Parks and Rec is not adding anything additional for this year outside of just some basic operating things. The next item is our police department is looking at potentially adding a couple flock camera systems within the city limits. I do know that the Crow Wing County is potentially adding some as well within the community. And I will probably let Todd. Come and speak on behalf of what they do, their benefits and. His ideas.
Good evening. The flock cameras are. Essentially license plate reading cameras. They don't collect any personal data or anything like that. It's a photo of the vehicle. It reads the license plate, compares it to a hot list for. Stolen vehicles, vehicles with registered owners that have warrants, amber alerts, any missing persons. All the more serious type of things. If something were to happen in town, like say a burglary or something, if. Someone saw. A red Jeep with. A sticker on the back window. You could enter that information in. It'll search back through the system and. Provide a picture of that vehicle and the license plate, so. I guess that's what we're looking at. I don't know if you have any. Further questions. It would be. That price there is with installation after. That it would be. Six thousand per year ongoing subscription costs for each, for the camera, or two.
Chief, where were you looking at putting those? I'm sorry.
We would have to sit down with. Some people from Flock and see where we wanted to put them. DOT recently started allowing them within the right of way high, on the highway. So that would be another option too. They have, you know, analysts obviously that sit down and provide where would be the most beneficial place. It'd also be something whether we want it, you know, more in the downtown area or. Out somewhere else in the city, so.
Is the eighty five hundred, did you say inclusive of the six thousand subscription?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, three thousand dollars per camera per year and then. The additional on top of that six thousand would be installation costs. And that would be the maximum cost depending on. Location, whether there's an existing pole that they can use or they have to put in their own pole, things like that, so.
We talked about a. Siren.
Correct.
Do we have that in the budget for twenty twenty six?
We do not, no. I have not heard back. From Federal Signal yet as to when they'll be in the area to even look at locations or anything like that.
That's what I last recall too. Okay. Keep us updated if there is progress on that front because I think it. Would make sense for us to consider. Providing proper coverage. There have been. I brought it up before. There. Neighbors. Primarily south. Of Niswau along three seventy one corridor that simply state they can't hear the, the siren when there is something going on, so. That or we give all the residents in Niswau the, the QR code to get the app, which. Might be, you know, a temporary placeholder until we get that, so we could consider that too, so.
Todd, maybe you have some information, but they actually just did a test, was that last month? Where they made sure everybody in the county was at a siren. I don't know if there was, if you received any feedback from the county on if they were all working or not working.
I had not heard anything about any of them not working. Within our city, so I'm assuming they were all good to go.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Yep, not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Public Works and Sewer does not have any new items as well. I kind of just put a summary together and again, I'll kind of zoom in here a little bit more. To kind of show the impact to the levy for all of these things. All the new things do not equate to a, a very large increase, but it does. Increase the levy about a little over one percent. So just as you kind of add and subtract things that you're maybe in favor of or not, this is kind of where we're sitting for the new items.
But that's Maggie on top of the six point.
Nope, that's, that is included.
Oh, included, okay.
Yep, all of, all of these items are in the budget. That you received yesterday for six point zero seven.
The only unknowns right now are the road bond and, and the contracts.
Yes. So is there any questions on this? Otherwise, I'll go to the summary budget spreadsheet.
You printed that off ours, didn't you?
It's in the, oh, you guys didn't get your packet, it's in the hallway.
It should be all together.
Supper packet.
I thought I had it, but. I saw it all in my.
Email. Did you hear yours? Okay.
It's money. As they say, it's just money. It's just a joke.
Alrighty, so here is kind of the summary comparison from. Our current twenty five to our proposed twenty six. And then kind of I'll say the increase or decrease. So. I know we've kind of talked about budget stuff. I don't know if there's a specific department you'd like to like focus on to look at if you want to go through all of them. If you have any questions, I do know that PFM will be at our retreat special meeting on Thursday to discuss road bonds and the. Future funding for. Kind of where we're sitting at with all of our bonds and sewer and infrastructure for the property.
My only question with that, with the road bonds and all that. Does that have a separate line item in there for legal also with all this? All the. All the stuff that we have to do this time go around with roads. Or is that in here?
So ordinary, the legal and all of that is underneath our professional services line item. And then what ends up happening is once you. Once we get the bond, those costs go into the bond.
Go into it, yeah. Can you please scroll down to?
Yes.
Percentage. So we're looking right now at four point eight four, as is.
Of expenditures, including the bonds. If you look open your, it's not on your spreadsheet, but. Right now we're looking at six point zero four percent levy increase.
So just for my clarification, when you say this is inclusive of the bonds. Is this also inclusive of the twenty, this is not inclusive of the twenty six road bond as it sits right now.
No twenty six road bond, these are just our existing bonds, so.
We're thinking we'll have that information. Of what that dollar slash levy figure will be after Thursday?
Yes.
Will we know that figure come Thursday, like when PFM, PFM is there?
So what you'll have is an estimate. So you won't know the actual bond amount until bidding. But it'll be. Right in there.
And does that include?
And it's as good as the estimate from the engineer.
It's for that amount?
That amount plus the right of way costs, yeah.
Five. Points.
I haven't gotten easement costs from the engineer. I know he has provided them to PFM, but I haven't seen that.
Okay. And as of right now, Tom, are you still thinking that the twenty six road bond? Will be proceeding as is?
That's my intention until we hear from PFM. Because I don't know what the bond costs are going to be. I, I don't know what percentage it will add to, to this budget, so. Until we know that, it's, it's. I don't want to re, I don't want to start changing the project anymore than we have because we just incur more engineering costs and other costs. So right now we've got both bonds balanced out at about five million.
You said both or?
Yeah, so the preliminary. On the twenty seven bond would be in the neighborhood of five million. That will likely change as we start digging into that.
How's Upper Roy?
That would be with Upper Roy in the twenty seven project. Now, one of the questions I wanted to get from PFM is. Is there anything we can do with bonding that would allow us to keep it in twenty six? We're, we're prepared to go with it for twenty six if we could. But we're also prepared to move it to twenty seven if financially we can't swing it.
So that five million total actually still includes Upper Roy Lake Road?
No.
It does not.
It does not. Right now, we're, we've pushed that to twenty twenty seven in those estimates. From there, I guess what we would do is either you can eliminate. Or push back roads or you can limit what we do to each road. To lower costs.
We need to get into that discussion on Thursday to, to have more detail on every aspect, right, around that. I think my preliminary thought, and I shared this with Maggie earlier today, you know, so not to blindside anyone. Is, you know, we don't know the percentage added yet with the road bond, so we'll, we'll find that out, I guess, soon or at least have some. Estimates, preliminary estimates, but already at six percent, let's just say it were three or four. estimates, preliminary estimates, but already at six percent, let's just say it were three or four. I personally am not comfortable having a double digit or a high increase on the, on the residents um, in twenty six because they've been hit with those increases over the past years. And I've shared this before, so I'm, I'm probably a broken record, but everybody know, you know, when I ran, I door knocked this town four times over and the largest thing I heard at the doors was concern around the levy and the increase and trying to look at ways to be mindful without sacrificing, you know, the responsibilities we have as a city and the things we need to do. And I know sometimes that can be a, a hard balance. And when we came together as a council at the beginning of this year, we did discuss the three different budget scenarios of having each department kind of look at a decrease, like a, uh, seven to ten percent decrease, a flat to cost of living increase. And then, you know, just kind of like the wish list with things that maybe aren't need to haves, but nice to haves on top of the need to haves. And so again, I know it's a difficult place to be in because we do have responsibilities as a city and we have smart, capable people leading departments, but also just trying to balance that with not hitting our residents with a another huge levy increase, cause I would consider nine or ten percent to be huge. Um, and I know we're in the first iteration of this and we have the meeting Thursday, but I just wanted to share that, that feedback, which I'm sure no one's surprised to hear me say. Council member Fraley?
I've said this before too, I know, I'm, I'm a broken record too. I don't like to see the levies up there either. And I just wonder if we're getting into the position where are we gonna be taxing people off their property and out of their homes? I think, cause we have a lot of retired fixed income. We have the needs, we'll just see where it goes. Kinda. It's hard, it's hard to swallow. We gotta do what we gotta do.
If you recall, we, the one tool in our toolbox for roads that we haven't used is assessments. Do have that. I know no one likes to hear that, but, uh, if you want to hold levy costs down, it's one way to help do that.
You know where I stand on those.
That's why I'm not pushing it.
Yeah, but then you're, you're putting
I think we'd put bleachers in here then, because.
Does anyone have any, on the council have any specific or want any specific department had to come up and go into more detail? I know we, we kind of did a budget discussion the other month, but as Maggie said, if, if anyone wants to have a deeper dive into any specific of these, all the department heads are here. No, not, not at this time. Okay.
The one thing I just will note that was talked about at one of the other meetings is, um, talking about cutting commission, mayor, council pay. I will tell you, looking at your twenty six budget, including your monthly stipend and some training and transportation, your budget for mayor and council is a little over thirty thousand dollars. I know, I think one of you presented like, hey, maybe we cut it by ten percent, so you're only looking at three thousand dollars. But that was one of the notes I had from the previous meeting. And a lot of that stems just based on how many meetings we have to. I think we try to, I can't remember our exact meetings, but you know, the more meetings we have, the more special.
More costs.
More costs there are.
And that's what we have to look at is cutting out all the special meetings.
We need to cut the special meetings, yeah.
Try and.
Cause when I saw that, that was going up, I go, whoa, 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 what's going on?
Yeah, and then just to make note that in two thousand twenty six, we do have elections, so we're adding another sixty seven hundred dollars in our budget for that as well. That was not there for twenty five.
Well, I think it will be good to get into the, the session on Thursday, get more information from PFM, have deeper discussions, right, when we have more time with some of these topics. And then see kind of where we land for the next round.
Yes, I do want to just remind everybody that our preliminary has to be approved and sent to the county by September thirtieth. So I do know that time is kind of of an essence and I do have some vacation days scheduled. So if we need to set a preliminary, it probably needs to be next week, the twenty second, twenty third or twenty fourth.
Yeah, cause we, we gotta get that going.
I will be back on the thirtieth, but I would prefer last minute.
So we may need to come together next week, we're going to need to.
Yep, so after the retreat or during the retreat, we can, you know, continue that meeting to Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday, so we don't have to meet the three day notice for a special meeting, so we just have to make sure we word it as a continuation. So otherwise, there just really isn't a whole lot unless you guys have something you wanted to look specific at one of the departments or you want to talk about our list of new items on kind of where we're sitting and what you would like to see added, subtracted.
I feel like it'll be good to get in the meeting with PFM first and then maybe come back with subtractions, additions, changes. So we have a more full picture.
And at any point, I know there's a lot of information within those budgets documents, but at any point you have questions, certainly reach out to myself or staff within their departments and we'll do our best to answer whatever questions you have between now and I'll say Thursday. Otherwise, it seems pretty easy.
Anybody have anything else from the council? Okay, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Also move.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, the budget workshop is adjourned. And the regular council meeting is not until seven, so not six, it's seven.